Thank you, call this meeting in the Westland City Council order. Begin the pledge allegiance led by Councilwoman Melissa Sampe.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Pro Tem Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Here.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay. We have no special presentations or announcements tonight. We'll move to comments or input on the, excuse me, comments or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion of support from the council. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? On the agenda? Yes, sir.
Hello, Edward Pruitt here, and I'm going to speak on actually every agenda item. With regards to a questionnaire that I put out to the community, we had additional 21 respondents. It's based on the agenda itself. It came back with results. And of the 21 additional constituents, community members, on item C, 71.4% said yes, 23.8% said no, and 4.8% said needs more information. On D, 42.9% said no, 28.6% said yes, 28.6% said needs more information. On E, 90.5% said yes. On F, 81% said yes. On G, 71.4% said yes, 19% needs more information, 9.5% no. On new business one, 52.4% said needs more information, 33.3% said no, 14.3% said yes. On two, 81% said yes, and on three, 52.4% said yes, 33.3% says needs more information, 14.3% said no. There were comments that they were able to make on the agenda itself items, and these were some of the comments. An oil change facility should not be placed in that area due to traffic concerns already in place in that area. No reappointments or new appointments should occur until pending appointments have been, that have been delayed, have been considered, and a one-year extension is a wait-and-see game. A six-month extension with leave to revisit at six-month period is more palpable. Another, most are probably fine. These items I have placed on my public page for both council and the public to be able to see them. I think it's very, very important that our community is intentionally involved, and that is why the questionnaire was put forth to the community. We were able to make sure we had verification processes in place to verify that these were community members. I'm thankful to each and every resident who participated. I believe we're going to have even more participation next time. If anyone would like to see it, my name is Edward Pruitt. It is on my page, Edward Pruitt for City Council. Thank you.
All right, is there any other input on the agenda from the public? All right, we'll close the input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion from Councilman Hersberg, supported from Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting and the study session held September 5, 2023. Approval of request for a temporary event permit from Country Fresh Farms to conduct a temporary meat sale at Pro Fireworks located at 36980 Ford Road, October 18 through October 21, 2023, with the hours of operation 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Adoption of prepared land division resolution, 6555 North Newburgh Road, southwest corner of Warren. This was planning department number 1701E, and the land division was approved by city council April 17, 2023. Approval of the fire and EMS learning and training subscription with Lexapro LLC to complete various educational credit requirements required by the state of Michigan. The subscription is a one-year period amount not to $66,478.70. Approval of request from Relay for Life to waive the administrative City Hall rental fee to hold their 2024 kickoff fundraiser, Pizza Palooza, to be held here at City Hall November 14, 2023, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The rental fee of $375 for a nonprofit package deal is waived. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of resolution declaring the last week of September each year as the Westland Multicultural Week. Moving to payment of voucher.
So moved.
Motion from Councilwoman Sampe, support from Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Moving to new business, item one, confirmation of reappointment of John Sullivan to the Westland Border Review for a three-year term as an alternate effective upon council confirmation and to expire September 21, 2026.
I have a motion from Councilman Godbout, support from Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any, mayor?
Thank you, President Hart. We're looking for reappointment for John Sullivan. He's an alternate on the border review. He also serves on the LDF, LDFA and the Youth Assistance Advisory Council. He is in the audience with his wife today, who both are very, very active in our community, so we're asking for the reappointment tonight.
Thank you, mayor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Mr. Sullivan, please stand and be recognized. Thank you.
New business, item two, approval of request for site plan approval extension for McAllister's Deli located at 36101 Warren Road, south side of Warren between Central City Parkway and Wayne Road. This is planning department number 1718A.
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilwoman Sampe, support from Councilman Godbout. Mo?
This site plan for McAllister's Deli was approved on September 19 of 2022, right across the street on the south side of Warren, right across from City Hall. It's the former Baker Square site. It's a vacant piece of land right now. They proposed to build a drive-through deli at that location. There's a few of them here in Michigan. They've had some economic troubles in terms of borrowing and lining up some contractors for the job. They still are pursuing the project here in Westland. As you know, their one-year approval for the site plan expires tomorrow. By ordinance, the city council is authorized to provide a maximum of an additional one-year extension for that site plan approval. That is what they're requesting today. I do not believe there is a representative from McAllister's Deli in the audience.
Let's see. Any discussion from the maker? Anything from the supporter? Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
New business, item three, approval of resolution acknowledging an early voting pilot program for all voting precincts to be conducted within Westland City Hall during the hours 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on November 2, 3, and 4, 2023.
The motion from the pro tem? Is there support? Support from Councilwoman Sampe. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Proposal two was adopted by state of Michigan voters, November 2022. That proposal involved very comprehensive changes to the way we vote in our state. Probably the biggest thing that's going to be most visible to people is that for all future state and federal elections, an early voting period is mandated, required constitutionally in effect. And what that means is, for a period of nine days, the beginning of the Saturday, a week and a half before the election, concluding the Sunday immediately before the election, there will be early voting. And people can come to early voting sites throughout the state. If you live in Westland, registered in Westland, obviously you come to Westland. But at that point, you check in, you get a ballot, you vote it, you put it in the machine, in the tabulator. The tabulators are required to be locked and secured every voting day. Results are not tabulated until after all precincts close on Election Day, on Election Day itself at eight o'clock. The state of Michigan and the county of Wayne were seeking somebody within Wayne County that would agree to a pilot program for early voting. They want to have people become aware of it, potentially use it, to have clerks and staff members and other people that are affiliated with elections test it out, get it ready before the big elections next year for the presidential, presumed at this point to begin in February. After discussions regarding support, what kind of effort it would take, and the fact that I declined to consider a full nine days, we settled on three days. It includes a Saturday. We hope that people will consider taking advantage of it. The only difference to voting is the fact that you're voting before Election Day. Everything else will be the same. So the Election Commission in the city of Westland approved my request, and I'm asking the city council to acknowledge it at this point. It will mean that there are changes to what occurs in certain portions of City Hall during the early voting period this year, and of course, in successive years during the state and federal elections. My indication to both city council during budget, as well as the mayor, and to the Election Commission was that I think the voters could benefit from not being disrupted, so to speak, during local elections. In other words, even though it's not required, the communities offer early voting during local elections or any other election that's non-state or non-federal, I think it's a good idea. We'll see how it works out, whether it actually is a good idea, but I'm asking for the council to acknowledge it, and I would appreciate and respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Pro tem?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the city clerk. Are there other municipalities in Wayne County piloting the same type of program?
No.
Okay.
No, Westland is the only community that agreed. I mean, I asked, actually, I asked at the beginning of the year whether there'd be an opportunity for it, and the state said no. But they came to us, I'm going to say about two weeks ago, not quite two weeks ago, to ask if we would still be interested, so we talked it over, but we would definitely be the only one.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to the city clerk. In terms of your staffing, are you having your team staff the City Hall location for the pilot program, or is this going to be election volunteers?
I'm glad you asked that question. The answer is no, it will not be staff. Our plan at this point, and very likely moving forward, is that Westland City Hall, specifically the ballroom area, will have four, I'll call them precincts, four areas in which to vote. Every one of those precincts in there will include 10 precincts. So, you know, 1 through 10, Station 1, 11 through 20, Station 2, et cetera. When everything gets done, one of the questions that has not been responded yet is whether we can have people that, they're not volunteers, by the way, election officials that are hired to work for us during the early voting period, whether they're precluded from also working on Election Day. If so, that's additional challenges we'll work through, but we don't have an answer to that yet. But our plan as of today is that we would use amongst the group of about 300 people or so that we have helping us in elections in precincts to have about 40 people to staff City Hall. We will have staff members assigned to respond to questions, check on things, interview where necessary, things of that nature.
Can I ask a follow-up? So is this a cost savings then, or is this just?
No.
Okay.
This will definitely not be a cost savings. Proposal two is an incredibly expensive constitutional requirement, incredibly expensive. The state has indicated that beginning next year, their plan is to help fund with grants the state and federal portions of them. Part of the reason that we're wanting to do what we're doing now is so that we can gauge, you know, cost versus return on investment, what it costs for a miniature version of early voting during local elections. But next year and thereafter, the full nine days, more people, more wear and tear, more everything, it's going to be expensive.
Council? Councilman Godbout?
Just, is, I'm assuming that the funds necessary are in the existing clerk's budget, and we don't need to do a budget amendment for this?
Yes, that is correct. We, when we are looking at this, we charted, if you will, the anticipated cost. I'm not going to come back to council to ask for an amendment, barring anything that is completely unforeseen later. But also, just as an FYI, the federal presidential primary, again, it is presumed that it will occur February 27, but that depends on the state legislature. That election will be entirely reimbursed by the state. So, you know, we're getting in front of a few things, but we'll definitely work within our approved budget.
All set? Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Keep us up to date, Mr. Clerk. All right, we'll now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker. It will not stop while the speakers recognize from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever is first. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, sir.
Edward Pruitt again. First, I want to start off with my comments to Mr. LeBlanc. Thank you for your due diligence in everything that you do for the election. You are very communicative and help us along the way, so I appreciate that. I'm extremely excited that Westland is able to pilot an avenue for expanding voters' rights. It's exciting. So I know it might be a little bit tough, but I'm excited for us to be at the forefront of that. In regards to the questionnaire, there were some public comments that they had here, so I'm going to read through. These are the categorizations of those comments. And the first is, and I'm just going to read down the list, police presence concerns, future outlook concerns, limited business being conducted at city council, charter violations concerns, monthly financial allocations and projections not being provided, neighborhood road repairs, Holiday Park shooting with government silence concerns, the farmer market considerations. Thank yous to our DPW crews, resident impacting information, day-to-day information, responsible fiscal management concerns, simultaneous construction projects creating traffic concerns, sirens functionality and promised but not communicated repair plan concerns, proactive measures concerns especially surrounding children being hit by vehicles going to and leaving school. The specifics in regards to those comments, why are meetings missing substantive topics? Is it because of election season? Is the city council receiving the required charter, required financial documents? What is the progress on the neighborhood road repairs? Why has there been a delay with the interim mayor and police chief providing information about the shooting of Holiday Park, in Holiday Park? Not being able to hear the emergency sirens inside or outside of the home? Here's one about crime and what the plan is to reduce public safety. Why did another child get hit at Marquette and Newburgh? It was planned to have more things done, and it's not done. I'm not going to do the political one here. Our tornado sirens either not working or being told for months they would fix the broken ones, and how concerning it is that multiple residents agree it's hard to hear inside and outside. Again, I thank all the residents. I thank you all for listening. You can find all the information, the full information, on Edward Pruitt III for Westland City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody on my left? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. Ruby Richards, Westland resident, also the secretary of the Western Wayne County NAACP. And I just wanted to let you know that our annual 26 Freedom Fund Dinner will be held Sunday, October 15, 2023, at the Soho Banquet Center and Event, Banquet and Events Center at 34615 Warren Avenue from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you want to purchase a ticket, you can go to westernwaynecountyNaACP.com, or you can go outside and get a flyer and scan this QR code. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to my right. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Tina Lindsay. I'm an investigator, and I was contacted over the weekend regarding the video of Marshall, William Marshall. I just released that video about three, four hours ago. It's quite devastating to see how these officers, Compton and Gomez, treated Marshall, knowing fully that he ingested crack cocaine without telling Sergeant Buckley, which they took him to jail, and Marshall ultimately sacrificed his life for that, those officers' actions. Those officers were not suspended, but they were given promotions. I think it's absolutely devastating that Marshall's family has to learn of this video, which is going to be hitting Channel 7 News with Kimberly Craig tonight. I think your city needs to do better with its officers. I have officers from the police department working with me as informants, just so you know, and they want change in their department. So I hope that you listen to them, and I really hope that their jobs are not in jeopardy because of it. You know, I'm not here to bash anybody, but you guys need to start speaking up for your citizens. That's why they put you here. So I just hope you guys do better than what you're doing. Oh, and there's another death that's going to be coming up, one that the public is not aware of, and that death took place December 10 of 2022. That's going to be dropping next.
Thank you. Back to my left. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Ms. McCormick, my resident. This is the fifth time I've come before you. I mailed all of council and the mayor pictures of the ordinance violations of the Mees that Christopher Sparta and Brenda Minton refused to do anything about. Mr. Interim Mayor, what is the outcome of the issue? There still isn't any enforcement. You are condoning Sparta and Minton's fraud, lying in court. Why don't they have to do their job? You're condemning their illegal acts, which makes you as hateful, malicious, and discriminating as they are. They are abusing their power, and so are you. You have done nothing for months where you are well aware of their improper conduct and abuse of a senior citizen. This is how you run a city, abuse its residents, and turn a deaf ear to the fraud of your employees. I found your email reply to be false. I found your email reply to be false, ugly, comment, proving you don't know what you're talking about. And I don't understand why I am entitled to answers. And every time I come here, it's like it's not going in the first year. Nothing is done. They are not having to do their job. And there's never any result. You just keep going, just like the last lady talking about, you know, all these problems. It's like you're not listening to anybody. You're just sitting there and not doing anything. Deaf, dumb, and blind. I deserve an answer. Why don't they have to do their job? No answer, you have no answer. Well, heaven help the city. Heaven help the city if you get elected.
Thank you. Back to my right. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Stephanie. I am a resident of Westland, so are these ladies over here. We come with concerns for the SoHo Banquet Center on Warren Road. We are residents, we live behind the facility. The light beams that are in the parking lot of this facility beams through the homes that are on Blackfoot Street and who knows what other homes they beam into. These lights are very bright. It's like a baseball field is behind us. They beam into the cross-d street neighbors areas. Something needs to be done with the lights. The lights are just, they're, they're bright. They're very bright. Another concern is the parking lot. The parking lot, when it's unsecured, there is drag racing behind the building. There is donuts, people going back there doing donuts behind the building. There are doing donuts even when their parties are going there at the banquet. It is very dangerous. I, I would hate to see one day one of them lose control of a car and I have to tell my nine-year-old what's happening back here. It's just not fair. I just think that the lights need to be addressed and so does the unsecured parking lot. I think as a resident of Westland, I think it's fair that something needs to be done. So, that's, and I do have pictures, I have videos, I have anything that you guys would like to have. So, just, I'm, just as long as the lighting, we don't care that they're there. We just want the lighting in the parking lot, just something to be done. That's, that's all. That's all we care about. So, that's why we're here. So, do you guys need pictures?
All set? All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, is there anybody on the left? Anybody on the right? All right, we'll close citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thanks, President Hart. Good evening, everyone, tonight. Thank you for bringing that stuff forward. We'll definitely take a look at it. Obviously, I started looking at it just now and he called on me, so we'll have a chance to take a look at it deeper. I do remember when I was on city council a while back that we did get some complaints about the lighting over there, so I'll see what happened and what has not happened since the first complaints came through years ago. So, as far as the young lady that got up and spoke and said I wasn't responsive, I did respond to her via email and apologize if it wasn't a good response in her mind, but feel free to reach back out to me again. Be happy to talk to you a little bit more, so. Want to thank council for moving forward tonight with the appointment of John Sullivan to the Board of Review. As I stated, him and his wife are very active in our community and I thank them for their efforts for, you know, to better our community. I also like to remind folks that want to get involved in our community. We have an upcoming board member fair and recognition day on October 12 from 4 to 7 p.m. We're going to be honoring current board members. They're going to all receive recognition for their dedicated board service. You'll also be able to meet city liaisons and board members, visit various information booths, get help with your application, and network with community members while enjoying some light refreshments, so. Recently, the Department of Innovation and Technology attended the Michigan Government Information Management Sciences Fall Conference. Wow, that's a lot, Craig. This conference brings together IT leaders from the state of Michigan, counties, and local governments in order to exchange information and technology best practice that, best practices that enhance the delivery of government services across the state. During this conference, our own Department of Innovation and Technology were awarded two awards for their continuing excellence in driving service for our residents and staff. I have both of those in front of me. I'm very proud to talk a little bit about them. So, the two awards were the Organization Impact of the Year Award for their work integrating multiple software systems to communicate better, creating more efficiencies and better reporting for various departments. The Citizen Impact of the Year Award for their work in developing the City of Westland eRecycle Events held last year, which resulted in over 33,000 pounds of electronic waste being recycled instead of being put in landfills. They've also, multiple projects were reviewed for these awards but were considered the most impactful in both categories. We were also the only organization to win two awards. So, congratulations to Craig Brown, our entire do-it team, as we call them, for being leaders in the state for IT services. Last week, we had a groundbreaking event for the Southeast Michigan Construction Academy at the new Westland building located at 35600 Central City Parkway. For those that have been around a long time, this is the former Dick's Sporting Goods store. This school trains over 600 apprentices annually across five locations. The ever-increasing demand for skilled trade workers has led SEMCA to locate here in Westland and provide accredited training for several different construction trades. With close proximity to Livonia, Canton, Wayne, Garden City, and Downriver communities, SEMCA will continue its mission to prepare the next generation of high-quality construction professionals for rewarding careers. It was very nice to have a well-attended amount of people there. We had the school district there, City Clerk Richard LeBlanc was there, Councilman Gobow, Councilwoman Sampe were there. So, they're going to be right across the street. Right now, you might see some people coming and going in the lobby, wondering what they're here for. They're actually running out space right now at City Hall, like three or four ballrooms, actually, to do that right now. So, they're really excited to open up across the street. We're really excited to have them as we know the ongoing trades are blowing up now. As we all know, the UAW is in a historic strike against the Big Three. I just want everybody to know I stand in solidarity with the UAW workers as they strike to fight for a contract that gives them the wages, job security, and benefits they deserve. Westland's the 10th largest city and I would, I would say we're a strong union community. I would venture to say that every union is representing our community in one way or the other. Estimates, probably one out of every four people in our community are part of some type of union, so. I'm wishing the best to the negotiators as they, they work together to try to not delay this process with the Big Three. We all hope they, they quickly meet to get together to ratify these final agreements. I was out over the weekend, was able to talk to a lot of the workers and they think it's going to, they're in it for the long haul. It could be a couple of weeks, they think it could be up to three weeks. Once they ratify the contract, they have to, or once they come to an agreement, they have to go across the country and ratify it all across the country, so it could be a pretty long time. So, with that being said, just bear with me for a second here. They did want me to share a list of items that they need while they're on strike. There's a lot of, you know, single-family homes that, single-family residents that, that are on strike right now. There's a lot of people that need this. And then for those that don't need it, if their strike ends soon, they're going to donate this back in the community. So, the UAW Local 900 is requesting the following items. I won't read through every single one, but I'll just give you an idea of kind of what they're looking for. So, any type of bottled water, bottled juice, any type of canned goods, bread, rice, beans, canned meat. They need grumola bars, pasta, macaroni and cheese, pet food, of course, anything you could use around your house, toiletries, any type of paper products, hand sanitizer, feminine products, laundry detergent. You get the garbage bags. They have a nice spread of stuff that people have been donating. I told them I'd reach out to our residents because the City of Westland is very compassionate. We always give back to the community. So, if anybody has it in their heart to donate some items to Local 900 over on Michigan Avenue and Wayne, they would greatly, greatly appreciate it. Last two items, folks. I want to congratulate yous to the Conference of Western Wayne on celebrating their 45th anniversary. The City of Westland is part of this 18 member community of Western Wayne County. So, I was out there at the dinner. Councilman Gobow was also out there and our Chief Human Resource Officer, Stephanie Field, was also there. We presented a resolution on behalf of the city for their 45th anniversary. Last but not least, my first annual State of the City address will be held on Wednesday, October 4, 2023, at the Westland Friendship Center located at 1119 North Newburgh Road. The doors open at 11:30 a.m. and the program will begin at noon. This is going to be a luncheon event, so please RSVP by calling my office at 734-467-3200 or you can always email us at mayor@cityofwestland.com. We'll also be signing up folks at the Friendship Center and on our website, cityofwestland.com. At that event, we're going to be giving three special award presentations. One, two, I forgot. It's the birthday boy today, Richard LeBlanc's birthday today. We're going to be giving the Circle of Excellence Award to-
Please, I'd rather be.
Happy birthday. We're going to give the Circle of Excellence Award to City Clerk Richard LeBlanc, who's served in dang near every branch of government here locally, so we want to congratulate him on that. We're giving the Legacy Award to former Mayor William R. Wild and the Lifetime Achievement Award to Barbara Schimmel Markham. So, we hope to see you out there. If you're not able to join us, it'll be airing on WLND. We've got a lot of great things to talk about and we hope you'll come on out and join us. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing, nothing from the city attorney's office, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll begin council comments with Councilman Hersberg.
Thanks, Council President. I'll be real quick. I just want to congratulate John Sullivan on your reappointment and thanks for your service to the community. It was brought up a couple of times. I think Edward Pruitt, he had done a survey online to get more feedback from residents on our agenda. I thought that was a pretty good idea and I think maybe some of us should start reaching out and bringing in, bringing in more feedback than what we currently have. I think we can, we can all do a better job at that. And I want to thank the residents from Blackfoot Street for bringing those concerns forward. I do have confidence that it'll get taken care of because I know that the owner of that building does have a good relationship with the city, but if for some reason it doesn't get cleared up, feel free to email me or anybody on council and we're going to take a second look at that. And then lastly, I just want to point out to the council president, State Rep Coleman had his hand up at the end of citizens' comments. You missed that.
I didn't see it, I do apologize, Mr. Rep.
So, I just wanted to point that out to you. That's it for me, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Rep, if you wanted to say something, please do. Well, I'm just going to go ahead as the president.
Hey, thank you so much. My hand probably wasn't up as high as it needed to be, so.
Well, my hands are getting older, too.
I appreciate you just give me, I'll make it quick. I just wanted to thank everybody who came to our last coffee hour between me and County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. Always here to serve. I'll be in Lansing the next couple of days here on your behalf. There is some new legislation being offered for introduction that may affect local government and a lot of issues that pertain to the City of Westland, so I'll be updating you coming up soon on that. And then, of course, if I can ever be of service, our phone number in Lansing, 517-373-2275, my cell phone, 734-751-6321, and my email, kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. All set, Councilman Hersberg? Okay, what? Too late, Miriam, I'm sorry. I'll make a special exception for the state rep, but.
I must have, no, I wasn't going to make a presentation. It was just on the agenda.
Right. Okay. All right, we'll get it back on the tracks. Thanks a lot. All set, Councilman Hersberg? All right, Councilwoman Sampe.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Miriam, too. We wanted, myself and Pro Tem got that text message from you, so we apologize, we didn't know if you needed to speak. I hope everyone's doing well. I had a great weekend. I actually spent my Sunday at Local 900. My husband has been a union worker for Ford Motor Company for 27 years, so it hits home. My father-in-law retired from there 35 years and my brother-in-law currently works there, too, so it affects my family pretty, pretty deeply. So, I appreciate Mayor mentioning all the items that they need because union brothers and sisters, they were going through them very quickly and there's a lot of single parents that rely on a one-income family and the money that they're getting for strike pay is, is not much, so. So, thank you for those that are interested in donating. It's right off of Michigan Avenue. I'll post something on my council page as well, too, for items that they do need. I'm going to start with a happy birthday to our awesome city clerk. Thank you for being here on your birthday. Congratulations to John. We, we know how much the Sullivan family does in the community. I was just talking about the trolley tours and I'm going to take you up on that private one, that the Sullivan family is, is a wealth of knowledge, so thank you both for all that you do for Westland. And then, Miriam, just to, I guess I'll give you your plug. So, Pizza Palooza is probably my favorite event ever on November 14 from 5 to 8 at City Hall. That's probably the only event I can get my, my 16-year-old son to go to because there's pizza there, so I was really happy to see that on the agenda. And then, over the weekend, I participated and attended the All-American Craft Beer and Wine Fest. I know my colleagues were there, too, so, great event and it was great to see that, for the second year in a row, that we're hosting it here in Westland. Also wanted to plug and thank the Westland Police Department. A Day for You took place over the weekend. It's a special, a special event, you know, with sensory, sensory tours, no lights or sirens. My brother, who has low-functioning autism, he couldn't make it because I couldn't take him. We had a study session this weekend, but they really do a great job. I talked to Officer Kelly and she said it was really well-attended and really well-received, so it's great that we're able to bring that back here in the city. And just wanted to plug that our next meeting is Monday, October 2 at 7. Of course, we always welcome residents to reach out to us. If anyone has any concerns or questions, you can always contact me, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe on Facebook. That's my personal Facebook page, or call my cell phone, 734-637-2078. Everyone have a wonderful evening, be safe and kind with each other. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Councilman Gobow?
Thanks. I just wanted to thank John Sullivan for continuing to serve on the Board of Review. Board of Review, for those that may not be aware, is probably one of the most contentious boards to have to sit. Most people that come to the Board of Review are here to appeal their tax bill. And so, it's, it's one of those thankless jobs that, you know, they have to make some tough decisions on valuations of property and it's, it's, you know, John's offered his services, you know, as an attorney. I'm sure he's aware of, you know, the legalities of some of the assessments and that come across, so again, thank you, John, for continuing to serve in that capacity. We had a number of study sessions lumped into one on Saturday. Ironically, the Citizen Oversight Board was one of those topics. You know, unfortunately, we didn't get into depth on all of those topics that were lumped together into, into one study session and I look forward to seeing the minutes with the action items that are supposed to be taking place as a result of some of those discussions that we had on Saturday. And that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Hornbuckle?
Thank you. Want to thank Melissa for starting this meeting off with pleasure and lesion. Happy birthday. Happy birthday, Clerk. I do want to give some follow-up information. I was, I had the opportunity to go by Holiday Park and talk with my favorite community over there and I just want to say that their complaint was not about safety. Some of them thought it was funny that it happened. They haven't had any action in a long time over there. This is kind of random for them. So, safety is not a concern. Home still feels like home for them. People was walking around, talking, front doors were still open and they felt this was just an isolated issue. But I did ask them for their main concerns for their community and see how I can help. The main concern they have is, as you know, the bridge. Please don't close the Wayne Bridge before the other bridge is finished. The second concern is speeding because of the bridge. People cutting through their neighborhood speeding. And the third one was people not stopping at the stop sign on Wildwood. So, those are their main concern. Other than that, they were definitely happy. Half the residents didn't even know what, what had, took place, so. Wanted to give that feedback to the city council that they were still in good spirit and no one was fear of safety. Stop by the beer and wine. I know it was a great event, but, you know, we was worried about, you know, how do I say this? The marijuana, I didn't smell any. I don't think we had any complaints about it, so I believe this was definitely a great event event and look forward to next year's event. What else do we have here? An update on the LOEs. We'd like to update the city council that we did get some complaints from neighboring cities that the music was too loud, but other than that, it went pretty good. So I will continue to work on how can we fix the noise problem over there, some type of accommodation for that. What else do I have? And back to Holiday Park, if anyone in Holiday Park need any assistance or anything I can do to help them, they can reach out to me at (734) 224-2747, or they can go to my Facebook page, Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, and I'll be gladly to help as much as I can. And for the union, you know, we definitely support our union. They're part of the family, and if you can donate, please donate. Other than that, that's all I have for today, and thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening. I've got two pages of notes today, so please bear with me. First off, happy birthday, Mr. Clerk. Forty-seven?
Twenty. Forty-seven? Forty-seven. You did not major in math.
I did not. But happy birthday, Mr. Clerk. Congratulations to our IT Director, Craig Brown, and your recognition on that, well-deserved. I want to thank our Westland Fire Department and our Fire Administrator, Kelly Eggers, on the flash fire event that they put forward. I wasn't able to make it out, but I did buy a ticket for that, and I know that that's something that all of us here on council, you know, typically support. The administration supports it year after year. So thank you to the Fire Department and Kelly Eggers for putting on another great charity flash fire event. Thank you to Officer Kelly, Sergeant Paris, and Officer Trossper of the Westland Police Department for the Day For You event. We did have the study session, which I'll get to in a minute. I've got lots of thoughts on that. But thank you for the Day For You event, for helping people with kids who are differently-abled, disabilities, sensory issues, and organizing that event each and every year. It sounds like it gets bigger and better each and every year with more people, more families showing up. So thank you for doing that to Officer Kelly, Officer Trossper, Sergeant Paris, and everybody that participated. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for your continued work here in the community on the Board of Review. Again, as was said, it's one of the most thankless jobs because you get, you catch the most stuff, we'll say, from people in the community. So thank you for signing up and volunteering to do that again. And I hope that if people sign up for a border commission, that they are accepted on that border commission as well. Let's see what else here before I get to the UAW stuff. I do want to thank, going back to Mr. Clerk, thank you for the pilot program, for signing Westland up. Expanding voting rights is something that's really important. I know that Prop 2 puts a big burden on your office, and for you to take that on with the pilot program here in Wayne County is big, so we appreciate the support with that as well. Regarding the study session, it was mentioned that we had a study session this weekend. It was nice to talk about some of the many topics that many of us have been trying to get some momentum on, so thank you to all my colleagues that showed up, the administration, all the members of the community. I know I was long-winded. I did almost probably two hours of the talking there with the Citizen Oversight Board presentation that I did, and want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman, or Council President Pro Tem Brokowski, on the responsible contracting ordinance portion of that, even though I was up there at the podium speaking. She put a lot of work into it with me. She's been a partner throughout this process. But yeah, in regards to the oversight piece, that covered really the first hour of what we talked about. I want to thank many people on that one. First off, I want to thank Attorney Brett Namcheff, who came out to support me and speak about the oversight issue. He's an attorney with 27 years' experience in law enforcement and also has some experience working with police departments across the state of Michigan. I was disappointed to see it dissolved into some, you know, it got a little personal, and I'm sorry to folks that, you know, went back and forth with, so sorry to hear that. But I want to thank Attorney Namcheff for showing up. I want to thank Dr. Scott Wolf of Michigan State University. He's a PhD in criminal justice for helping me on the presentation. I also want to thank State Senator Erica Geis, who had initially helped me put that presentation together regarding a citizen oversight board. I want to thank our President of the DEI Board, Mr. Warren, who gave me a lot of great feedback on that as well, and also made the recommendation on oversight with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Board that we have here in the City of Westland. I want to thank the Police Department for coming and sharing their thoughts on the matter as well. It's important to get the feedback from leadership and the PD as well. I want to thank them for their thoughts and all of my colleagues for their great questions and the back-and-forth dialogue that we were able to have. I thought it was very productive. Looking to move forward on, again, some of the items that we talked about, the responsible contract ordinance. There seemed to be a lot of good consensus amongst the council here for moving forward on that, that Council President Brotem Brokowski and I brought forward. The Walk and Roll Plan specifically around pedestrian safety and sidewalk connectivity, which also lends itself to pedestrian safety, reinvigorating and reinvesting in that. I think there's a lot of excitement and momentum to reinvest in that. And then having a, you know, a future study session and additional conversation about our marijuana ordinance and any changes or reviews that we want to do regarding that. So I'm looking forward to future dialogue and action items getting addressed there. So thank you to all my colleagues for bearing with us on a Saturday and that great discussion that we had. Last but not least, I did want to mention that the UAW was already mentioned by the mayor, mentioned by several of my colleagues here. This is a historical moment and a turning-point moment, really, for working-class people for the United States. And if you're watching these comments at home, and you're watching this meeting at home, or you're here in the audience, you are working class. Whether you're in a union or not, you will benefit from the contract that gets negotiated by the United Auto Workers because the real trickle-down economics is not when we cut taxes for the rich. The real trickle-down economics is when we go from the bottom up and we help working-class people. And when working-class people like UAW or any union or otherwise get a great contract, that's something that benefits and has a trickle-down effect to the rest of us. When they get good benefits, we get better benefits. When they get a wage increase, we get a wage increase. When they fight for safer working conditions, end to a tiered system, end to these temp worker statuses, this is something that will benefit people, union and non-union alike across the economy. And frankly, when these corporate executives of the Big Three can afford to pay themselves tens of millions of dollars in compensation, Mary Barara at General Motors making 28 million in 2022, Carlos Tavares at Stellantis making 24 million, and Jim Farley at Ford making 22 million, they can afford to pay their workers a living wage. They can afford to get rid of the discriminatory tiered system that seeks to divide union members. They can afford cost-of-living adjustments. They can afford a four-day work week, and they can afford an end to this terrible practice of temp workers where they keep people, especially in Stellantis's case, for four, five, six years on temp status and leave that carrot always dangling in front of workers. So as the mayor mentioned, there's many ways that you can go out and support the UAW. You can walk the picket line at Local 900 up there and support them. You can drop off many of the aforementioned supplies and goods, if you'd like, over there at the local. And, you know, you can post about it on social media, tell your family and friends, because we really are a historic and turning-point moment for working-class people across the City of Westland, across Michigan, and really across the country. When this contract gets ratified and Sean Fain and the UAW leadership, this is going to be something that I think we all really benefit from. I want to thank all my colleagues that I've seen out there on the picket lines. I know for some, it's deeply personal because they have a family member in the union and who's a Local 900 member, but thank you for everybody who's come out. Thank you to all the residents. I've seen just random residents showing up in support there as well. But this is really, I think, a historic and turning-point moment. And with that, I bid you all a good evening, treat each other with kindness and respect, and I'm really looking forward to having more dialogue on some of that stuff we talked about at the study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem?
Thank you, Council President. Those were small pieces of paper. We're used to having full sheets of paper. It's those small pieces of paper. Well, good evening, everyone. Like my fellow colleagues, I want to thank Mr. John Sullivan for his continued dedication to our city. I won't get into the gory details of the Board of Review, but it is a pretty thankless job, but it's good to be able to help out our fellow residents. So thank you, and thank you to your wife for everything that she does, especially with our historical commission. I'm jealous of your private tour. I'll come, I'll come. For the folks in Holiday Park who were mentioning the bridge being a concern, I was on a call this afternoon with the Wayne Road, Wayne Road, geez, Wayne County Road Commission. They are still saying it won't happen until after the Merriman Bridge is done. So as, if you're local to Westland, you know there hasn't been a lot of movement there. The weather, especially the flooding and the missing infrastructure details, that from when the bridge was originally installed, has made it a challenging project. So I don't see that finishing anytime soon. So if you live over in that, on the Wayne Road corridor, I think you're okay. They are doing the resurfacing, but that shouldn't be a long-term project. But I know those barrels have been there forever. In the Holiday Park incident, thankfully, it was non-fatal. You know, unfortunately, there's a lot of unhappy people making it known that they're unhappy in a variety of ways, and unfortunately, in that community, somebody decided to shoot their gun. So thankfully, no one was injured, and their safety is in place, and the individual who caused a ruckus is under, is in police custody. I want to congratulate the IT Department. We see a lot of your requests come across our agendas, and we know how safe you keep all of our infrastructure, so those are well-deserved. You have a fantastic team, and more often than not, our servers are good. We're up and we're safe, so that's a credit to you and your teammates. Miriam wasn't able to, or chose not to, speak about the Relay for Life Pizza Palooza event, but as my colleague, Councilwoman Sampey, said, it's become my son and mine, but he's nine, so he gets no choice. But it's our Mommy's Sunday each year, and last year, we enjoyed pickle pizza. So it's a fun time to kind of try out some of our local pizzerias and some of their, we're going to call them delicacies. Yeah, pickle pizza was weird, but it ended up being, being really good. The folks on Blackfoot, there are ordinances for the lights. I was speaking with Councilman Gobow, who probably knows them all inside and out, but there's candlelight, so how light or bright the lights can be. I know there's been some changes when we've changed over to LED, that there's not a one-for-one translation, so we'll get somebody over to take a look at that. There's directional issues as well. I know there's an intersection that drives my aunt crazy because the lights shoot right into the intersection at, like, Dusk and beyond, and they're quite blinding, so, and we'll see what we can do. And I agree, the drag racing is out of control. They also have been at the Westland crossings over behind the McDonald's. They're doing the same thing, and it's dangerous. There's no way, you know, no other term, but it's dangerous. For that, I guess I am just going to wish you all a happy rest of September. We'll see you in October. Stay safe and be kind, and if you have any concerns, you can contact any one of us, and hopefully, the next time we talk, we'll know a little bit more about the Merriman Bridge, maybe. All right. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. I'll begin tonight by thanking Councilwoman Sampey for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and also congratulating Mr. Sullivan again, and more so thanking you for your continued service to the community. We really appreciate it. And again, it can be, it can be rather thankless, so thank you for doing it because I don't want to do it, so thank you.